This meeting of the Penridge School Board. I'd like to start this meeting by saluting, calling to order and saluting the flag. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Cron, would you call the roll, please?
This is Nandis Clemmons. Mr. Casper. Mrs. Cullen.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Millen.
Here.
Mr. Reggelo.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Yardley. Here. Dr. Yarnell.
Here. Thank you very much. At this point, we will move to student and staff recognition.
Tonight I have the pleasure of introducing Mrs. Lori Markloff, cafeteria manager at West Rock Hill Elementary. Lori has been named the School Nutrition Association of Pennsylvania, a tremendous nutrition person of Pennsylvania, tremendous honor and a tribute to her hard work on behalf of the students. Mrs. Gina Giron Tana, our Director of Nutritional Services, would like to say a few words about Lori.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just tell you a little bit about Lori Markloff's accomplishments as the cafeteria manager at West Rock Hill. So Lori has been named the School Nutrition Association of Pennsylvania's Manager of the Year, and she has been named this for some of the following accomplishments that I'll tell you about. Lori has been instrumental in creating a work-study program for our IT students. She's worked with many of them, and most recently, she worked with a student for over two years, and now that student is a substitute cafeteria worker for us at the district. She comes up with creative ideas on how to get children to come into the cafeteria and purchase lunch, and one of the things that I thought stood out that she does to encourage our Takes Pride initiative, students can get what they call Pride Paws for doing things that meets the Takes Pride, and if students accumulate 50 of their Paws, they get to redeem them to serve their class. So the students get to come up and serve lunch to their peers, and in one marking period, they had 14 kids that collected enough Paws to be able to serve their fellow students. Lori was instrumental in helping us get our first school garden off of the ground in She always incorporates whatever she can from the garden into her menu, and she makes a sign every time that she's using something from the garden so that the students know that they're eating something that was grown right in their backyard. Lastly, she has volunteered her time at West Rock Hill with things like the Fall Festival, Book Fair, Holiday Shop, and most recently, last year, she set up a stand at the Percival Farmers Market to tell the community about our garden program over at West Rock Hill. So Lori is truly a role model for all of my staff, and we're so honored that she's been named Snap was 2017 Manager of the Year. So help me congratulate Lori.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rattigan, and thank you. Congratulations on winning the award, obviously quite an honor. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go if you don't want to spend the evening listening to the board, right? Your choice. At this point, we'll move to public comment. The Penridge School Board welcomes public comment according to Policy 903, and we remind everyone of the following. Public comments shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the Board. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and note their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer rather than to individual Board members, district employees, or members of the public. A speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please note that these sessions are designated for comments to protect the confidentiality and privacy rights of all members of our community. The Board encourages members of the public to direct any comments regarding particular individuals such as students or district employees privately to the superintendent or other appropriate administrator, or to communicate with the Board privately by sending an email to the address psdschoolboard@penrich.org. Questions raised and not answered may be addressed, may be followed up at a later time. Any public comment before we start? Mr. Linden, please state your name and municipality.
Tell me which question, Mr. Silver.
Yes, finally, they should, the right one.
I've been here for a long time, so I needed a comment to make, and I perused your agenda and right off I found something I want to bring to your attention. It's item line, subtext C, item E, small e, you're going to sell three buses. I looked at that and I didn't felt that wasn't really the best business deal that you could get because there may be an inherent value to the buses greater than the amount you wish to sell them for. Since you didn't describe the buses, I assume, I assume they weighed more than 10,000 pounds, unless they were little teen toy buses or something. The scrap value at present is 6.25 cents per pound for scrap metal buses. And if this bus weighs 15,000 pounds, that's a lot more than $600 if each bus weighs. And I thought that you should take that into consideration before you decide to sell the buses to a company that auctions buses, because obviously, they, the price, they expect to make money by auctioning the bus. So they are saying that the buses have more value than you're selling them for. That's scrap companies saying they have more value than you're selling them for. So I think someone should look at the scrap value of those buses before you decide to sell them at $600. Thank you.
Mr. Linden, I wish that Mr. Geiger were here. He described in great detail at the Facilities Committee meeting on August 6th, 9th, I forget what the exact date was, but the whole process of buying new buses and getting rid of the old buses and what the circumstances are for which bus was going to which disposal. I can't repeat that, and unfortunately, I didn't bring the notes with me, so I'm afraid I'm out of luck, but that I do believe was considered as part of his overview of trying to buy new buses this year and what to do with the ones that we had that were no longer valued to us. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Not? We'll move to the Consent Calendar. Are there any items on the Consent Calendar, item A through I, that Board members would like voted on separately? Hearing and seeing none. I will note that on the Superintendent's Personnel Report, there is one item that's being struck, one individual hiring, due to a lack of the Act 168 clearance form that we need. That would be item 14, which is a teacher being hired or to be hired for the rest of Rock Hill 5th grade. So that is to be struck when we take a motion for this. So do I have a motion for the remainder of those items on the Consent Calendar? Thank you, Mr. Reggelo. And a second? Thank you. Mr. Kraus. Moved and seconded to approve all the items on the Consent Calendar. Comments or questions from Board members? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. Next item is the Student Liaison Report. Tonight, we have a new representative from the student body, Sidney Herman. Welcome, Sidney, and perhaps you can offer whatever comments you wish to make tonight. We look forward to seeing you throughout the year.
Hello, thank you. As a student, my name is Sidney Herman. I am going to be a senior here at Penridge High School, and I am here representing Student Council. I am the Correspondent's Secretary. Not much to report on because school has nothing done, but Student Council is already preparing a few events. Our homecoming is going to be October 20th is the football game, and then the dance will be October 21st, and then that next Friday, October 27th, is going to be the pickup game that we do for residents or residents. So that's about it. Student Council is already preparing, and the school has nothing done, and we're excited to be still here. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome again. The President's Report. First of all, in terms of right-to-know requests, we have three new requests since the last full Board meeting in July. The legal fees for July were $987.45, and there is no outstanding balance on the legal fees. Tonight, I think I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the so-called Great American Eclipse today. Hopefully, those of you who aren't retired or didn't take the day off of work still got a chance to go out and see this event. It certainly was very interesting. I probably got a sunburn, my wife probably more so, and that's not a good thing in our case, but in any case, I think it points out the importance of science, and obviously, this hasn't happened in a while and won't happen for a number of years to come. Although we couldn't see all, the entire totality of the eclipse as seen in a swath of the country from Oregon to South Carolina, it certainly was an interesting event, and I think it points out the importance of science these days, as does our STEM program that we are initiating at the middle school this fall. Science is the first of that four-letter acronym, and I think it will be an important part of it. I grew up in the era of the Sputnik. Most of you can't remember that, so I know that's anachronistic, but yeah, some of us do, but not all. But it was a fortunate time in a way, not, I'm sure, for the psyche of the country when it occurred, but from someone who wanted to major in science, wanted to work in science, it was a very exciting time, and it was a time that was heavily supported by the government and other institutions, and students were encouraged to become involved in science work in science, go to school and study science. So I was very fortunate in that sense, and I think perhaps today's students are seeing a resurgence of this with the whole emphasis on STEM, and particularly on the side of the young women who now are being encouraged to go into science. My wife was a chemist, so she ignored the signs of the times and bucked the trend, not surprisingly. I know her well, and that certainly fits with her style, but lots of young women didn't. Now, when you go to graduate school or even to undergraduate school, places like MIT and Caltech, the number of women is essentially equal to the number of men. When I went to MIT 50 years ago, literally, graduated 50 years ago, there were just 36 women in my class of 935, so not a very large percentage. Times have changed, and in my opinion, for the better, for sure. So with that said, I will conclude by saying that I'm certainly excited for the next eclipse. For those of you who aren't fully aware, it's, I'm sorry, April 8th of 2024. April 8th has a special place in my heart. I have twin granddaughters that were born on that date, so I'm planning an 11th birthday party because the eclipse will stretch up through Cleveland, Buffalo, and into England. They happen to live in Boston where the totality will be 93%, so hopefully that will be a great date, and I'll still be around to see it and enjoy it. So that's my message for tonight. Dr. Rattigan, you always have something even more upbeat to say, so here's your chat.
I don't know if I could beat that, Dr. Yarnell, the solar eclipse, but anyway, I'll try. First, I'd like to thank Diber Elementary School for the District Office Meeting Room Display, and once again, this year, we will have our Takes Pride Themes of the Month. September's theme will be trustworthiness. Students will be reminded that people who are trustworthy are worthy of your confidence, and they are reliable. They can be counted on to do what they say they will do. And even though it is the end of the summer, we do have some points of pride that I'd like to share. Nine of our seniors who graduated in June have been recognized as National AP Scholars for their outstanding academic achievements after completing a range of college-level courses offered by the College Board's Advanced Placement Program. It is the highest recognition an AP student can achieve. They were among 687 of our high school students to earn AP Scholar status. In May 2017, 278 Penridge High School students took a total of 506 AP exams in 20 subjects. 84% of their scores were three or higher compared to a national average of 58%. To be named a National AP Scholar, a student must receive an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. Penridge's nine National AP Scholars averaged 4.56 out of five while taking a total of 84 exams. These students are Omar Ibrahim, 4.82, took 11 exams; Sarah M. Craig, 4.80, 10 exams; Gregory Luce, 4.78, nine exams; Nathan Runk, 4.75, eight exams; Christopher Kerchoff, 4.56, nine exams; Andrew Messina, 4.50, eight exams; Hayden Sand, 4.50, eight exams; Saleem Kolen, 4.40, 10 exams; and Jared Yellen, 4.0011 exams. In addition to the National, nine AP Scholars, the College Board awarded AP Scholar with Distinction Status to 35 Penridge High School students, AP Scholar with Honor Status to 11 students, and AP Scholar Status to 41 students. You can see the full list of their names on our website, so we are very proud of them, as you can imagine. At our June meeting, on another topic, I introduced you to two of our students, Lucy Chilton and Kiran Banks, who each won a national championship while competing on the Food Network's Chop Junior Show. Not long after his victory, Kiran was invited to spend an evening serving as guest chef at The Perk, preparing his signature dish for patrons. Well, this past Saturday, Lucy served as guest chef at the Rock Hill Filling Station, right up here on the ridge. To help celebrate the restaurant's second anniversary, Lucy crafted the daily specials menu, helped out in the kitchen, and visited with customers in the dining room. Among Lucy's specials were pan-seared scallops with pesto and Aunt Corey's meatball sandwich, which she included in memory of her beloved grandmother who died earlier this year. Lucy's side dishes included her special macaroni and cheese and her macaroni salad. For dessert, she chose bananas fostered from catering. Not bad for a young lady who just turned 11, so good job, Lucy. And one of our teachers was interviewed on Fox 29 last week for a segment about getting students ready to go back to school. Marquise Stokes is a 6th grade math teacher at Penn North. He's also one of our football coaches. He was asked to appear along with our other area teachers on a panel discussion hosted by Richard Curtis, a Penridge grad and teacher at Satterton High School. You may remember that Richard was a finalist in a national contest to become a co-host with Kelly Ripa on ABC. While that did not work out, Richard went to work this summer with Fox 29. By all accounts, Marquise did a great job sharing his insights about getting students back into a positive mindset about returning to school, so we thank Marquise for making us Penridge proud. And I would just like to thank all of the staff members who worked this summer. You know, sometimes people will ask us, well, what do you do in the summer? Well, those of us who are here know what it takes to get the schools, the offices, departments up and ready for school, so I just personally want to thank all of those folks publicly for all that they did. We will be ready to roll on August 28th. Thank you, Dr. Yarnell.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move to committee reports. The first of those is Activities. Mrs. Yardley.
Thank you. The Activities Committee met on August 9th, and we just discussed one item, which is also the motion for an overnight trip. So I would like to make the motion to approve the overnight trip request, the UCCA High School Cheerleading Nationals in Orlando, Florida, from February 9th, 2018 to February 13th, 2018.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Reggelo. Moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mr. Reggelo to approve the cheerleading trip to the Nationals. Comments, questions for Board members? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mrs. Yardley.
Okay, and the next regular meeting of the Activities Committee will be held here on September 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Second Committee Report is Curriculum. There was no Curriculum Committee meeting held in August or since the last Board meeting. There is a meeting scheduled for September 11th, 2017. It will be at 6:30 along with the Technology meeting here in this room. Next, we will move to Facilities. Mrs. Schmidt is not here tonight, so we do have two motions, the first of which is the approval of obsolete items. They are listed as Items A through G. I will make a motion that we approve that obsolescence list. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Moved and seconded to approve the obsolete items list. Comments or questions for Board members? No? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. The second item is the, to accept an award, the bid for the buses. So I will make, this is the purchase of four new nine-passenger vans, five new 72-passenger buses, two new 30-passenger buses, two 18-passenger buses, and then sell three school buses as well. Do we, I make that as a motion? Do we have a second? Thank you. Mr. Kraus moved and seconded to approve the, for the vans and buses. Do we have comments or questions for Board members? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The next meeting is scheduled for, if I can find it, September 13th is the next meeting for Facilities. Okay. So the next item after that is the Finance Committee meeting. Again, we do not have Mr. Casper here tonight. We do have minutes from the meeting of August 9th, 2017, and we have two items that are in the form of a motion. The first one is approval of the contracts as listed, and there are a number of these as I remember. No, I guess there's just one, sorry, there's just one tonight, the Family Foundations Partnership. So I'll make a motion, this is one that was in question and therefore was not moved at this special Board meeting. I'll make a motion that we approve this Family Foundations Partnership contract. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller moved and seconded. Comments or questions for Board members about this contract? No? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The second thing here is approval of settlement agreements. And there are, these are agreements for students identified as 2018-03 and 2018-04. I will make that in the form of a motion that we approve these agreements. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reggelo. Moved and seconded to approve the settlement agreements. Comments or questions for Board members? No? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The next Finance Committee meeting will be held the same night as the, which is the 13th, as the Facilities Committee meeting. They'll be here at 6:30 in this room, and from here, we'll move to the Intermediate Agreement. Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 19th, held at the Bus County Assembly location in Orlando.
Thank you. And then to Personnel, Mr. Reggelo.
Thank you. Personal Committee, and we have five and an added motion this evening, and the first motion is, for me, to approve the salaries, for the 17-18 salaries for the Business Administrator, Director of Administration, Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment, and the Director of Union Resources.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. Moved and seconded to approve the 2017-18 salaries of those four cabinet members. Comments or questions for Board members? No? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mr. Reggelo?
Thank you. The second motion is to approve the 17-18 Act 93 target salaries for the new Act 93 members.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. Moved and seconded to approve the new target salaries for, I knew there are five of the new members of Act 93. Comments or questions on this motion? No? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mr. Reggelo.
Thank you. The next motion is to approve the Act 93 agreement for the school year, set 2018-2019 to 2021-2022, in the form attached.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller moved and seconded to approve the Extended Act 93 Agreement. Comments or questions for Board members? I'll simply say I want to thank those folks, the Board members, who helped work this out. As most things, this is not a CBA, but even in an agreement like this, it takes some time and effort on both sides, and I think it was worked out very amiably for us this time. I congratulate and thank those who helped do it. Any other comments or questions for Board members? Not? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mr. Reggelo.
Thank you. The next motion is to approve the change in premium share for the Act 93 members from 14% to 10% effective July 1, 2017, for the 2017-18 school year to match that of the PEA contract.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved and seconded to approve this change in premium share. Comments or questions for Board members? No? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mr. Reggelo.
Thank you. The next motion is to approve the revised organizational chart.
Do we have a second to revising the organizational chart? Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Moved and seconded. Comments or questions for Board members? Mrs. Yardley.
Yeah, Dr. Rattigan, can you just point out what is, what's revised?
Well, we have a new interim technology integrator, that's Mrs. Erin Reiper. Since last year when we did this chart, we have a new humanities, language arts person, Mrs. Stephanie Washam. Mrs. Grobowski's title was changed during the school year, so she's now Financial Director. Mrs. Jennifer Summers is new as Supervisor of Special Education for Elementary. And I think that may be it.
And I think that may be it.
So. Majority of the changes you're saying are just name, people have changed, and then one title changed.
That's correct. Nobody has different reports than before.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mr. Regalmo.
Thank you. Then the motion that's being added is a motion to approve an amendment to staffing agreement between the Bucks County Intermediate Unit and Penridge School District to provide the services of Dr. Demi Foot to serve as Pupil Services Director for an interim period of time to be determined by the administration at a revised rate of $525 per day, original agreement reviewed by solicitor.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. Moved in second to approve the appointment of Dr. Demi Foot. Comments or questions for board members? No? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mr. Regalmo.
Thank you. The next, the next meeting is scheduled for September 6th, 2017.
Thank you. Next is policy review, and Mrs. Baynes-Clements is not with us tonight. The next meeting is scheduled for September 6th, 2017, at 6:30 in this room. The Upper Bucks County Technical School. Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Yernow. The JRC met on August 17th, I'm sorry, this is last week. 725 students are enrolled this fall, but most of the program's reaching 100% capacity or above. In our Technical Entrepreneurship Program, 20 students are enrolled in three credit business courses, which we have at Upper Bucks County Technical School. 15 students are enrolled in the brand-new afternoon Megatronics program. Because this program is new, enrollment is not yet to capacities, or the teacher's spending his time by teaching adult ed in the morning. The one-to-one laptop program, using laptops from the freestanding schools, is experiencing a seamless integration into the Upper Bucks County Technical School Wi-Fi system. The Adult Evening Program continues to expand and add courses for high-demand jobs. The UVCTS is also looking for funding to help with tuition for adults experiencing job loss to assist with their retraining. Adults are filling empty slots in the day program as long as they need background checks and are a good fit. The pricing schedule for both the Cosmetology and Dental Clinics have been released for the 2017-18 school year. Be sure to check these out. And dates to remember, September 21st is our next JRC meeting, and September 27th is the current information night, starting at 5:30 through 7:30. Thank you, Dr. Yernow.
Thank you. I would note that the Megatronics teacher is a Penridge grad, 1988 Penridge grad. Chris Pasante, I hope I haven't heard his name, I believe it roughly correct, and he's kind of come home, so to speak. He was teaching at LCTI, and now is back. Hopefully, he will have a very successful program. Certainly has a good start. So the next committee report is technology. Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Yernow. The Technology Committee did not meet in August. Our next scheduled meeting is for September 11th. Thank you.
Thank you. And committee, the next one is Act 48. Again, Mrs. Baynes-Clements is not with us, so the next meeting for that committee is scheduled for October 5th, 2017. Ad hoc fundraising. Mrs. Yardley.
The committee has not met, and we will meet as needed.
Okay. The Penridge Area Coordinating Committee. Mrs. Cullen.
Thank you, Dr. Yernow. The Act is still off for the summer. We'll begin meeting again in September, usually the third, third ramp in the month.
Okay, thank you very much. Old business, any old business from board members?
I have a question.
Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Speaking of the ad hoc, how's that going with the advertising for that, what is it, market? What's the name of the company?
Market Street Sports Group.
I just asked before the meeting too. It's good that you asked, I'm making updates.
So the last we talked was, was just in the last few weeks. They held several meetings with community businesses at this point. They've sent, they've given a couple, some samples, some draft proposals based on their interest in possibly sponsoring a structure. And currently, they are talking to two groups that have expressed interest in possible naming rights for the stadium. Nothing has been finalized yet. As soon as that happens, that someone is interested in signing a contract, that will go to the first discussion. So I'll keep you updated as soon as we have someone that's definitely interested in any of the structures.
Is this how you expected the progress to go? Or is it behind, faster, slower? Or typical what you expected?
I think it's pretty typical. The, I didn't expect the stadium naming rights, the biggest structure we have for sale, to be the first one that possibly could be sold. I expected that to be maybe one of the last, and maybe some of the smaller-priced ones. But some of the packages they're putting together, discussing with some of the groups, they're asking for other bases to be added. So I think it's slow at first, and as soon as you have one or two signed, I think the other ones are going to go pretty quickly. Also, word spreading, we sent some information out to the community, Joe Ferry did that for us, and so not everyone knows exactly, I think, what that meant at the beginning. It was new for us. But as they're meeting with groups, I think word's kind of spreading. So I think once we start getting a couple of contracts through you, I think it's going to start snowballing pretty quickly.
Thanks, Doc.
Any other old business?
Dr. Yernow?
Yes, Mrs. Cullen.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know, I accidentally muted myself during one of the votes, and I did vote yes on that, all of the motions tonight. I just wanted to be clear on that.
I think we heard you as a click as opposed to a yes, so we took that as yes.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying. The announcements. The next regularly scheduled school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 25th, 2017, at 7 o'clock in this room. There is a possibility of a special board meeting in September. That has not been confirmed as yet, and I would like to announce that there was an executive session prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of personnel matters. At this point, we're back to comments or questions from guests, same rules as before. Anyone wish to comment? If not, I want to thank you for coming tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, gentlemen.